I'd like to call the Northern Southern Board of Appeals for Wednesday, June 12, 2024, 6:30 PM. What everyone agrees. Right. We're calling here.
... United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the discipline of the religion, justice, and law.
Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
All right. Mr. Shackelford.
Present.
Mr. Ranlet.
Present.
Mr. Alexander. Excused. All right. Mr. De Bartomelemeo. He's excused as well. Mr. Ireland.
Here.
Mr. Nault.
Here.
Myself, I am here. Mr. Pearl.
Here.
All right.
Thank you. Approval of agenda and we can a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone to vote, motion carries. They make me read this stuff, so bear with me. Welcome, everyone. By the way, we don't have a full board here. We have an alternate serving and one person's absent. If any of the applicants want to postpone because we don't have a full board, you have a right to that. Let me know when you come up, okay? But you can be heard by the six of us. Also, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. The Board of Appeals functions as a quasi-judicial body with specific powers and limitations as outlined in the various sections of the zoning ordinance and the state statutes. The zoning ordinance sets the standard the board must use in reaching any decision. Once a decision, the board becomes final. Only the courts can modify or reverse that decision. The board is not empowered to change the terms or intent of an ordinance, therefore you must petition the Township Board of Trustees if you wish to amend an ordinance. Before a variance can be granted, certain requirements must be satisfied. Number one, practical difficulty must be demonstrated. Number two, whether strict compliance with area setback frontage height, bulk or density would unnecessarily prevent the owner from using the property for a pertinent purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. And three, whether a variance would do substantial justice to the petitioner as well as to other property owners in the district, or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief, be more consistent with justice to others. Whether the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances of the property, whether the problem was self-created, and finally, number six, spirit of the ordinance observed, public safety, security, and justice done. There will be a public comment at the end. Of course, during the petitioner's presentation, you're allowed to ask questions. Obviously, I'll call on everyone, anyone that wants to speak to that item. But at the end, you also could address the board for three minutes, but it's got to be confined to zoning board of appeals business, which means topics which the zoning board has authority and which involve zoning board of appeals matters. If a specific response is raised by persons that the public comment is needed, the board shall refer the question to the planning committee development department director designated for review. So with that, Mr. King, if you could call the first item.
Yes. So our first file number is 247072. Address of 21221 Abram Street. Petitioner's John Graham. And we have a request for two variances to allow for two 40-foot wide lots where a minimum of 65-wide lot is required, and two variances to allow for two 4,200-square-foot lots where a minimum of 7,800-square-feet lot is required. We have 70 male correspondences sent out and five were returned.
Okay. Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would you please come forward? Present your case. If you could give us your name and address, that would be helpful.
My name is Cass Collins. Address is 20423 Luna Street. I'm the assistant for John Graham, John Graham, Inc. Basically, Abram Street is a street of pretty much all 40-foot lots. This address is combined of two lot numbers, 309 and 310. What we want to do is uncombine them, give them each a Sidwell number, and we'll be building two new houses on those two lots. We're in the process of the demo of the existing property and its garage. We've got the sewer and water letter for disconnection. We're waiting for DTE and consumers' letters for their disconnect, and then we can pull demo permits to start the process.
Okay. And the reason for the... What's the practical difficulty?
There's... We can't build on each lot because it's one Sidwell number, so it's considered combined.
But you could build one home, but you want to go...
We could build one, but we prefer to build two, and I think for tax revenue and whatnot, it'd be preferable, too.
Anyone in the audience want to speak on the issue? Want to back off for a second? Sam answered.
Sam Boshel, 18546 Wayland Drive. There again, this property, you're going to have to have two 25-foot variances for a total of 50 feet. And the lot size, the actual square footage of the lot, they're each going to be approximately half of what the lot would have to be, you know, the 7,800-square-foot. When you take the two lots that total up to 8,400-square-feet, that means that literally is only 400-square-feet above the minimum for that particular area. And I think it's a little ludicrous to, you know, to try to say that we're trying to meet the ordinance as if we, you know, the lot right now is only 15 feet over the minimum, and square footage-wise, it meets it. So I think this should be denied.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience want to speak on this matter? Is there anyone from the board that has questions on the petitioner?
Again, I might mention, too, the lot size is characteristic for the street, so...
Can you say that again, sir?
The lot size, the 40-foot frontage is pretty characteristic for the entire street, up and down. I think it's like two blocks.
Does anyone have any history on the board of what we've done similar in the past?
We, you know, we've done some maybe where they had a 100-foot area and we let them build a little more on it, but, you know, frontage. But the question is, isn't that he can't build a home on it? So I'm looking for the practical difficulty. He's saying it'll blend in with the rest of the 40-foot lots. Is that sufficient? And the variance is... I'm looking for the variance on this. And then you have a newer garage that you have to take down?
Yes.
If you build two homes. If you build one, you could leave the garage, obviously.
Right.
So, um, there's two variances to allow for 40-foot lot, wide lots, where a minimum of 65-foot wide lot is required, and two variances to allow for two 4,200-square-foot lots where a minimum of 7,800-square-foot lot is required. So if the board feels that it matches the rest of the neighborhood, and that's what they want to go with, the... That's one case, but, um, you're supposed to have a 65-foot wide lot in our five district, so you need a 25-foot lot with variance, you know, a 3,600-square-foot lot, variance required for each of the proposed lots. So it's up to the board, what do you want to do?
I just want to make sure I understand this, sir. You're going to... You're demolishing a garage, but you're... Are you going to construct one on?
Well, we're going to demolish the existing house, which is substandard, and the garage because the garage would sit right on the new property line, and then build two new homes. So I think they're thinking like small, narrow-front colonials on slabs, but there'd be two of them.
With the square footage of that particular, those two homes, would they match the square footage of other houses?
Probably pretty close, yeah. I mean, I would say they're mostly like 900,000-square-foot ranches, maybe some bungalows. So, yeah, they might be slightly larger, but I think in character, you know, to the rest of the street.
You're just building the houses, you're not putting a garage?
Probably not, just from the point of view of resale. You know, in that area, we have to be careful on what we build because of resale values in that particular area, so probably it would just be the house, not the garage.
Okay. On the... I'd look that up. The four houses around him, at 21214, the house is 936-square-feet. 21222, the house is 981-square-feet. At 21236, the house is 700-square-feet. And the 21213, the house is 875-square-feet.
So what's the square footage you're proposing?
I think they're thinking probably around 1,100, 1,200 at the most.
For both?
Again, a colonial, though, not a ranch.
For both, individually?
Right.
Yes.
If you're going on a slab, it would have to be at least 1,250.
Yeah.
If you're going on a slab, it would have to be at least 1,250 to be... Are you in here for another variance?
Okay. No, then, yeah, I just, that was the idea that... I didn't get any exact numbers from... I know they wanted to do a smaller colonial, yeah, so...
It has to be 1,200, and if you don't have a basement, it adds another 50.
Okay. Thank you, man. What's the board want to do? I mean, we changed the requirements along...
We got another question.
Feedback from any of the neighbors?
No.
On either side of them?
I don't think we've received any.
I didn't see any. I'm just asking.
No emails or phone calls.
Are the other lots that you... Are they just as deep, or are they deeper than what this one is? You said there's other houses that are 40 feet, or the...
No, just the other, the other lots are 40-foot wide. I'm not sure. I assume on that side, they'd probably be all the same depth because, you know, there's utilities from back there, so it'd be the same. I would guess the ones across the street would probably be pretty similar, but they are pretty much all 40-foot lots.
You know, what you want to do is, um, the garage sits back, way back there, right?
I believe so. The existing garage, yeah. But again, in our proposal, the garage would have to come down because it's...
See, some of the other houses are going, um, I don't know, they look bigger lots, like right across the street, there's a big lot. So you got, you know, it's not exactly, um...
Wide, you mean?
Yeah, there's a brand, you know, newer home, it looks like, right across the street.
But again, one of those.
That's on a wider lot, it's got two, it's got...
Were they two hot numbers?
I don't know if it has two, if it's on two cars or not, but it's, but you really don't have that much room. You got a fence there, and then you got a garage that sits back there, and then you got a house that's deep. Some of the other houses go wider. You're really squishing it in there.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if there's enough practical difficulty myself, you know, to be combining those. Just doesn't look like there's that much room. If I'm looking at the right house, the garage is in the back, and you're right, it'd be right in the lot line.
Yeah.
We know why there's multiple houses that looks like they're on small lots also. They get variances for those, or they grandfathered it?
They built them years before the ordinance changed.
They're planted at 40 feet, but the zoning code kind of dictates moving in an upward direction for the lots.
All right.
I mean, that's why there's smattering of 40-foot lots because that's the direction the zoning code is indicating. And I mean, that's why this one's one parcel is because if someone needed to make a compliant lot to build their own, they must not want to go through the variances route. So they combined them to build the compliant house.
All right. Thank you.
The legal description is, though, two lot numbers, yeah.
But right across the street's a larger lot. So why may be correct on the, to the right and left, but there's houses that are a lot bigger on that street?
They're intermixed all down the street. They're intermixed, get both.
So are we going to go backwards in time or go forward?
I'd be willing to bet that the large lot across the street is probably the same thing. It's combined two 40-foot lots.
Well, yeah, if you wanted to demolish an old house and build it, one new house and leave the garage, you could do that, too. So there's an option. Whatever the board wants to do. I'll entertain a motion. Don't jump in and out once.
It's the inner, I think, because you're right, there's both sides.
Is there a practical difficulty?
That's the problem.
He can build a house there.
Right.
He just wants to build two. You know, under a large or a variance. So is that really a practical difficulty? Because it's a financial hardship which isn't allowed to be considered. So am I helping you guys or what?
I've got my decision made. I've got my decision made.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
Let's see, let me think about how I want to word it.
Well, it's either a motion to approve or a motion to deny.
Well, I thought we had to list the practical difficulty.
Not if it's a motion to deny.
Okay.
You could just say there's no practical difficulty.
Oh, okay.
If there's a motion to approve, then you'd have to state the practical difficulty.
Sounds good. Okay.
Or if it's consistent with the neighborhood.
Understood. All right. I would like to make a motion to deny based upon that there's not, no practical difficulty.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made to deny in a second discussion. Roll call. This is a motion to deny.
Correct. Mr. Shackelford.
I approve. Yes.
Mr. Ranlet.
Yes.
Mr. Nault.
Yes.
Mr. Ireland.
Yes.
Myself, I vote yes. Mr. Pearl.
Yes.
Okay. The motion's been denied.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. King.
Next item, file 247077. We have address of, I'm sorry. I have file address of 43151, 43171, 43191, and 43211 Del Coma Drive. I have petitioner's Kim Hall, and we have a request for variance to allow for a monument sign. We have 251 male correspondences sent out, and we had zero returned.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Name an address for the record.
Yes. So as mentioned, my name is Kim Van Hall, and I represent the Del Coma Professional Park Association. Our address is 43151, 43171, 43191, and 43211, all on Del Coma Drive. It's a medical complex that's composed of four buildings, each with their own address. We're seeking today approval for a second monument sign. The complex has three driveways, and we currently have a sign on the south entrance of the complex, so it's between the most south drive and the center drive. We're proposing to put a second sign between the middle drive and the more northern drive. The purpose for this is to service the community for wayfinding. We're simply looking to put the name of the complex on the sign and the address numbers of the buildings. It's been quite difficult for patients to find the buildings. There's two that are towards the Del Coma Drive, and then there's two towards the back of the complex, and those are a little bit more difficult to find. So that's what, that's what I'm looking to do, is have approval of a second sign. It will look exactly like the first sign, and it will just have the different addresses. So the first sign has the address of the two more southern buildings in the complex, and the second sign would have the addresses of the two more northern buildings in the So what questions would you have for me?
Well, first, we're going to hear from the community.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak? Name an address for the record, if you could.
My name is Cody. Address is 75191. I rent one of the offices from one of the landowners for it, and I also do general maintenance for the buildings, and I just wanted to impart some of the complaints from some of the tenants. Basically, the way it's set up is that there is one building on the southernmost corner, and there is four buildings in kind of like a compass, essentially. And they currently have a sign just for the southernmost building as well as the eastmost building, but they don't have a sign for the north and the westmost building because there are so many entrances and because the parking lot is set up asymmetrically, there's people that are having a lot of trouble essentially finding those last two buildings in the north and the west side, as well as the entrances to the buildings, they're not really thought out very well. They're on, it's really difficult to explain, but essentially, it's a compass, and then the innermost part of all the buildings linked to have entrances there. So it's just a little confusing. That's basically all I wanted to say, so.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience? I'll open it up to the board. Is there someone that has a question on the board?
And the signage you're putting up is consistent with the signage that's already...
It is. It's the exact same materials and colors, same size, just different address numbers. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good question.
Is there an increase in... Matt, do you know if second monument sign supersedes the total square footage of a sign that's allowed on the building for that complex?
I don't know. I'm going to think to look at that. We don't handle signs in planning, but I could probably look that up while you discuss.
Seems like they didn't think real well of the signage when they built those buildings.
There was one huge sign that we took down a couple of years ago, and it was actually not even in the berm of the complex. It was so southern, and it was one large unsightly sign, and at first, we just took that down to see if we could, you know, get away without a sign, and that was even more confusing for our patients and vendors that come to our facilities. I have handouts if you need to see any of the signs or locations or measurements, if anyone's interested.
So you see where they want the sign number two location?
Yep.
Are there, there's individual signs on the buildings, so...
Not all of the complex has individual signs. I believe only the east building, 43151, has an individual sign. Humzavi dermatology, and that building is entirely humzavi dermatology. The other three buildings are multi-tenant. The north building is probably the most difficult one to see, and I believe that is the one that Mr. Cody was describing that he's a tenant of. One of the other tenants is Henry Ford, and they have been very disappointed with the Del Coma board for not having signage on the north side, and they actually put their own sandwich board out about two weeks ago.
That's one way to do it.
So to keep the complex nice, it would be nice just to have the second sign. We've been trying to do a lot of work to this complex to really step it up. We're having all the asphalt redone this spring as well.
So there...
There's definitely pride in ownership at this complex.
So I just want to be clear, there is one sign there, right?
Correct. The one sign that is existing right now is for the 43151 and the 431, I think it's 71, let me... Yes, 71, correct.
As best as I can tell, I mean, this is very quick-looking, but it looks like you get 120 feet, 120 square feet for a lawn sign like this, and it looks like the existing one's 36 square feet, so it would only be 72 with the two.
Okay. So they're under...
Which is why there's, I would assume that's why there's not a size variance included with the application.
Okay. So there, so it's, the question is the second monument sign, not the square footage. It's under square footage.
Correct.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it. One for safety, and for the size and scope of the variance will not result in the lack of visual harmony within the surrounding properties.
It'll be backed far enough so people can see to get out onto the cone?
Yes, correct. You can definitely see coming in and going out. All of those measurements have been taken into account when the first sign was placed, and we would be doing the same for the second sign as well.
So there'd be plenty of room to see oncoming traffic?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second?
Supporting.
Okay, discussion by the board?
Say again?
All right, any discussion?
No.
Okay, roll call vote, please. This is a motion to approve.
Mr. Shackelford?
Yes.
Mr. Randlet?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Myself, I vote yes. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Motion passes, you're all set.
Thank you, I appreciate your time this evening.
Go to the building department, what, in a couple of days?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, what was that?
You can check with the building department for the permit in a couple of days.
Thank you.
We'll get it over to them. Next item, number three.
All right, we have file 247078. We have file name or address name, 39400 Moravian Drive. Petitioner is Gary Breshear, and we have a request for variance to allow a 10-foot by 14-foot accessory structure in the side yard, and we have 32 mail, mail correspondences sent out, and we have zero returned.
Petitioner here?
I'm here, yes.
Okay. Give us your name and...
Gary Breshear, I reside at 39400 Moravian Drive. And I simply want to put a shed, the, the structure's just a simple shed, no electricity, no water, and I want it in proximity to the garage. My garage is on the side of the house, and, and I want the shed facing the garage. I want to put tools essentially in the shed, everything from my lawnmower to snow blower, so I can put, uh, put my car in the garage. And I don't have, it, it's very difficult to put it somewhere else in the yard, just because it would be difficult to access it, especially if there's snow on the ground. Or, there's no other walkways, and I have a lot of grass in the yard. The other side yard is where my septic tank is, so I can't put it there. The backyard is an open grass field that we use for family functions. There's no trees except in the very back along, along the fence line. So to put it anywhere there just kind of inhibits what we do as a family. So I've got a nice little corner plot, I even have pictures of it if you want to see it, a little, little corner section right in front of the garage where the shed could go. This land, I guess, used to be the backyard of my neighbor. I talked to Joanne and Todd, and long ago before we moved in there, that was somebody's backyard, so now it's now our side yard. And they couldn't believe that the building department denied the, the permit, because this doesn't really act like a side yard, because the way it's shaped, I don't know if you can see a picture of the lots, the lot shape, but it's very strange, and I'm, I'm a good 120 yards off Moravian, off the street, so it can't be seen from, by the neighbors or even from the street. So that's why I want to put the shed right there. It just, for practical purposes, it's very difficult. Anywhere else would be somewhat of a hardship. So I don't know what questions you have, or if you need any pictures of what, what I'm talking about.
Shed gonna be...
It's a small shed, 10 by 14.
South of the garage, or what?
South, I guess it's facing the garage. The garage is on the side, so that would be, yeah, it would be south, I guess.
It'd be to the right of it, if you're looking at your driveway. It'd be to the right?
So if I'm looking at the front of the house, it's to the right. The garage, but if, if I'm standing open in the garage, I'm facing my shed. So if you want to see a picture, I've got it, it's hard to, hard to explain.
Well, I can see your house.
Okay, so here's, yeah, so there's my garage, and here is, there are those. Yeah.
What is that, Anita Street that goes through? You're on a corner?
Anita's, well, it's like, the third house down is on the corner at Anita. So there's Anita House, and then two houses between mine, but the other two houses are up front near, closer to Moravian. Mine's waste set back in the property, so I'm far off the street.
So yours is past the other house?
Yeah, definitely.
That's your driveway?
That long, there's always, I have a 100-yard, 120-yard driveway all the way back to the house, yeah.
Nice plowing.
Is that a, so if I'm seeing this correctly, so that's your garage right there at the end of the driveway, right?
When you get, yeah, well, it's part of the house, but, yeah, uh-huh.
And so the shed is going to go in front of that?
Yeah, in front of it. So when I go down the driveway, and I go, I turn left into my, into my garage, and then to, out to the right is where the shed would go.
Gotcha.
And it's, yeah, it's, okay. It's not paved, but I would put a slab there to put the shed on it.
Okay. Okay.
So you're surrounded by woods?
Completely, yes. And so...
That's why we always have the powerhouses? Because you're...
I don't get as many, yeah. My father-in-law down the road gets more than I do.
I get them every week, yeah.
So, I haven't had many this year, a couple of links.
And when the sun's out, we get them. Okay, what's, anyone in the audience have a question? Nothing, Sam?
This is another case where a resident who has a huge lot and a huge tax bill has to come in and beg for a, a variance when you have something like the hag lighting...
Wait, let's not bring up that.
Well, that's, that's why I wasn't going to get up.
Let's just talk about this one.
Well, I'm just saying, it's bad when, it's bad when a...
Are you in favor or not?
I'm in favor of it, yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. What's the board want to do?
I think we got a...
I'm making a motion to approve on the grounds of the, the size and shape of the property, with the result after the variance is visible and harmony with the surrounding properties.
Support?
Mr. J.
Oh, Ireland.
Discussion by the board? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. King.
Mr. Shackelford?
Yes.
Mr. Randlet?
Yes.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
I, myself, I vote yes. Mr. Pearl?
Yes.
Motion passes to approve, you're all set.
All right, thank you.
Check with the building department in a couple of days.
All right, appreciate it.
Have a good day. Keep the trees away from those power lines.
And, and the animals and everything else.
Right.
Okay, Sam, it's your turn, public comments. You can talk about anything you want to do, as long as it's to do with zoning.
It's, this is to do with zoning, and there again, as I pointed out, I think it's ridiculous that I see homeowners coming in here, one after another, begging for variances for as little as a cover over their porch, and you have hag lighting that the planning department, administratively, has given variances to go out into the front yard setback and the side yard setback, and they haven't had to come for anything. They, they eliminated sidewalks on the Kelly side, and so on and so forth, and it's a matter of, I'm pretty sure, I'm still waiting for an answer from the township, as to whether it's even legal for the planning department to grant an administrative variance, let alone several. So I think it's a shame to have the residents have to come in and beg, and when they're on a huge lot and have a business, and it's business after business, but this is one that's going on right now, they don't have to come in, they don't have to pay any of the fees, they don't have to go to planning, they don't have to go to the township board, and totally unbelievable, and we're, the citizens are even paying for their, their driveways through the, the pavement project, and that's ridiculous.
Okay, thank you. Next items, approval of the May 16, 2024 meeting minutes, everybody read it? Any changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Nobody wants to make motions. Support?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Discussion on the next meeting agenda, Matt?
Looks like there's just the one item. Business on Grashit, which will be seeking to install a second wall sign. I, I assume they're only permitted one, and...
Okay. Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn, then?
I make a motion to adjourn?
All right, thank you. Anyone, sects, supports?
Support.
All's in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 7:11.